The THC one?
Uh-huh.
The ordinance, the THC ordinance?
Yeah, I think it is.
I mean, it's there.
Did you say?
Just so we know, I have any tobacco.
All right.
He has twenty-two positions.
Yeah, I mean.
But we gotta have some regulation.
Yeah, I was, I was, I asked him, did anybody mention anything about it? You know? If anybody had asked for anything.
The school was.
You know, the THC one. You know, the ordinance that we're gonna do tonight. You know?
It's quite the project, isn't it?
It is.
Doing lots on this whole side, which is nice.
Yeah.
You ready?
Are you ready?
Yep.
We'll need order and start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone tonight. We'll start tonight's meeting with the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mary.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, move on to the next item of business to prove the consent calendar, which is the minutes from the previous meeting and the payment of bills.
So moved. Second.
Motion by John, second by Doug. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Is this the next order of business? Uh, public hearing? Open public hearing for the facility plans for reconstruction of the sanitary sewer collection system on Second Street Northeast, Roosevelt Street Southwest, McKinley Street Southwest, Fourth Street Southwest, Third Street Southwest, Second Street Southwest, and Fourth Street Northeast.
Here it is, uh, let me introduce Brian Drowell, the whole thing. He's the answer to the question.
Thank you Gerald. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Again, Brian Drowell with Bolton and Mink. Um, we're here for a public hearing tonight for a facility plan. Um, the city is looking at utilizing funding through the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority, um, which I believe you've used in the past uh, with your wastewater treatment plant. And so this is kind of one of the first steps is to submit a facility plan uh, to get on what's called the project priority list, which is kind of a list of projects statewide that they'll consider for funding. And one of the, uh, I guess requirements to get on the public or project priority list is, and the submission of the facility plan is a public hearing. So this is kind of a, maybe one of the first steps in this funding uh, process. Um, we have these, yeah, street and utility projects basically split up um, into kind of two, three areas, two projects over, uh, as they're proposed right now over the next couple of years. Gerald, wanna go to the next?
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and try to get this to record as well. Sorry about that. Now that I'm sharing my screen, it'll be a little more of a challenge. Probably showed it as when I do, but. That's the second slide there. Whatever I'm doing is not working.
Recording in progress.
All right, we're back. Sorry about that, Brian.
Okay. Uh, so, um, kinda north of Highway ten, uh, two areas, uh, one on Second Street Northeast on the west side of the, of the high school. And then, um, to the, the block south of the high school on Third Street. And then one block on the east side there on Third Avenue, uh, from Third Street to Fourth Street. Uh, slated, uh, right now for, uh, construction in 2024. And then, uh, as you see in red for an area in 2025 is a joint project with Todd County on Fourth Street, uh, northeast from Highway ten, um, north up to Warner Road. With the first two blocks being just a mill and overlay of, uh, what was done in 2010. And then the rest, um, uh, slated for basically total reconstruction. And then, um, uh, on the southwest portion of, of the city, uh, again, uh, three blocks on Roosevelt, uh, McKinley has four blocks, then about two and a half blocks on Fourth Street. Then Third Street, uh, four blocks and, uh, two blocks on Second Street Southwest as well. So, um, we're here, uh, the facility plan really, uh, just addresses the sanitary sewer. Uh, the report has sewer water. It's more, we're kinda just developed all of this. It'll be used at, in reports as we keep going, um, this being the first step. But, um, so the sanitary sewer in these areas, uh, has been identified with staff. Uh, eight inch, um, clay tile and twelve, to twelve inch clay tile mains. Uh, at, uh, Second Street, um, there is a sanitary main that runs under the, the high school. And so what, how we've looped, looped that area around, we're looking at, is there an opportunity? And we believe there is, um, we've taken some, um, shots on the sewer to route it, um, instead of straight under the school, south, um, then west and then up north. And then to be able to connect that, just in case, um, uh, you know, it's not good to have sewer mains under buildings, I guess. So looking at that, um, and then, um, Fourth Street, uh, with the total reconstruction with, with the county. And then, uh, those areas in the southwest area of, of town have been identified by staff with, um, a lot of rut problems with the clay tile in those areas. And then, um, there is one block that, um, I had mislabeled on McKinley. It's actually a cast iron, uh, uh, sanitary main. And so that was a question, uh, to the administrator this week of, is that correct? And it, it was incorrect in the report, but it is cast iron. Scott has, uh, televised that area and there's a lot of corrosion to the point where, um, a televising camera can't get through it. So he's identified that block. Um, it probably is, the sewer is kind of driving maybe the need for replacement on that block as well, even though it is cast iron instead of, uh, clay tile. The water main, um, in that southwest area is mostly, uh, four inch cast iron. Uh, fire codes, uh, say minimum sizes are, are six inch. So, um, with the clay tile and the undersized water main, um, in that area, some, um, asbestos cement pipe as well. Uh, Fourth Street, uh, again, uh, doesn't have the undersized pipes, but, um, cast iron, um, six inch cast iron and then, um, some ten inch of that asbestos cement pipe. So, um, a lot of areas, um, undersized. And then, um, talking with staff, um, there's a big push kind of statewide with lead services and lead service replacement. Uh, there's been some, uh, uh, specific funding through PFA for that. That will, uh, come out in, in May. We need to do another, uh, submission to them for the drinking water side. And so we'll be, uh, looking, uh, to identify those, um, uh, for replacement. And hopefully identifying maybe some specific funding for that. Storm sewer in the area, uh, we're, uh, really looking, uh, pretty much to just, uh, replace, um, what is there. Um, and if there are areas that, uh, can need some, um, extension to help with drainage. Um, we figured in a little bit of that in the southwest area, we don't have survey and such at this point, but, um, just wanted to, I guess, you'll see in the participating cost estimates, there is some city portion of storm sewer. Um, I guess it's just maybe a placeholder at this point, but just, uh, we don't know exactly yet, but wanna maybe just have some cost in there, um, upfront, so. Um, and then streets, uh, the areas are curb and gutter, the Second Street forty foot wide, southwest area about thirty-eight feet wide, and then Fourth Street, um, forty-four feet wide. Some aged streets, deteriorated pavements and curb, and some non-ADA compliant sidewalks. So, uh, moving to the proposed improvements, um, the sanitary sewer, uh, probably, pretty straightforward. Um, replacing, uh, these clay tile and cast iron mains, uh, basically with the same sizes, um, but just with PVC material. Again, looking at if rerouting the sanitary sewer from out, from under the school is a possibility. New manholes, um, and then, uh, new services, um, out to the right of way. This, uh, with sewer services, this is, I guess, another question that was raised, um, uh, this week to the administrator is, if I have a PVC service, do I have to replace it? And so, um, it's, looking at your, um, your special assessment. Uh, it says if the condition of the service lines are deteriorated and obsolete as determined by the city engineer, they shall be replaced. Um, I guess looking at if it's a PVC sewer service, that would probably indicate that it's been replaced by the homeowner since the original construction. And so, um, uh, very good comment to get at this point in the game. And so that, another thing that would need to be, uh, investigated a little bit, uh, more as we move along. Uh, proposed water main, um, that Second Street Northeast area, uh, looking to have a slightly larger, uh, eight inch loop around the school. Um, there is a four inch main under the school in that location as well. And is there an opportunity, uh, you know, to build in some redundancy? So, uh, if something were to happen to something under the, under the school that we are, uh, covered. Um, southwest area again, uh, probably the biggest thing, upsizing for those four inch up to the six inch to meet fire protection. And then basically, um, matching existing, um, on the, uh, on Fourth Street with, uh, new hydrants valves and adding valves and hydrants as needed to meet fire codes. And then, uh, hopefully maximize, uh, just flexibility for, for your maintenance staff in these areas. And then again, new services, um, out to the right of way. Storm sewer, uh, just in general, again, uh, replacing RCP, uh, with, uh, concrete mains as needed, um, and their, the structures, uh, to improve that. And then Fourth Street on the north end with the judicial ditch eight in conjunction with Todd County, um, replacing those two concrete culverts with a concrete box culvert. Streets, um, again, go through this quickly, matching, um, what's there for, for widths. And, uh, with the curb and, curb and gutter, uh, any sidewalks put in would be designed and constructed to, uh, be ADA compliant. Um, looking at extending sidewalk on the west side of Fourth Street up to the elementary school, um, where it, uh, kind of, it ends on the, the west side and continues just on the east side. But is there an opportunity to, to go, um, all the way to the elementary school on the west side? Um, restore driveways and private sidewalks with similar services and concrete aprons behind the curb. Um, tree removal where necessary and all that's always a touchy subject. And we don't like to just remove trees to remove trees, but, um, uh, depending on where services land and just pipe replacements, um, uh, that'll be, uh, probably a reality in some of these areas. Then, uh, grading boulevards, uh, from the sidewalk, uh, to drain to the, to the street. And turf, um, I don't know how well these are able to be, uh, seen, but basically just kind of a layout of each, each area, the, the school area with, uh, both blocks. Um, and then, uh, on the right, uh, that would be the three blocks of Roosevelt and then four blocks of McKinley. And then over to Fourth Street, north side of Third Street. I don't know if you wanna go through these or if it kinda, okay, we'll flip through those. We'll get to the estimated, uh, costs. And so for the 2024 improvements, so that's the southwest area. And then that, uh, Second and Third Street area around the school, um, looking at an estimated project cost right now of just under, uh, seven million dollars. Um, of that, what we're talking about tonight is the Clean Water Revolving Fund. And so that would be what is eligible through that. Um, that's program for sanitary sewer and then street items that are, uh, caused and need to be restored because of the sewer. Um, so that's about three point two million dollars. And then the drinking water, that would be the replacement of the water system items. And then, uh, associated street, uh, that's, uh, three point two nine million. And then the non-participating, uh, that's where there's just a few areas where there's not sewer and water. And so, um, PFA wouldn't say you're gonna take the whole street to just replace a water line. And so, and then some of that, uh, uh, storm sewer is in there. So about a, um, straight city obligation of about four hundred and sixty-five thousand. Moving to Fourth Street, uh, there is a, uh, cost share agreement with Todd County. And so our estimate right now that just about six million dollars, uh, about two point three million of that would be Todd County and then the City of Staples, uh, three million seven hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred. Um, further breaking that number down, uh, the, what we're talking about tonight was submitted, uh, for, uh, that one million three hundred fifty-seven thousand being eligible through the Clean Water Revolving Fund. Again, that's, uh, the sewer side, um, improvements. Then DWRF, Drinking Water Revolving Fund, um, we're estimating, uh, almost one point nine million. Um, that's, uh, more there driven just where the sewer ends kinda at the, um, elementary school. And the water continues on all the way up to, to Warner. And so, uh, a little bit more water than sewer on that. And then the mon, non-participating, again, a lot of that is the street costs on that northern part, uh, from the elementary school up to Warner Road. As we only have about fifty percent of that allocated, uh, as for street reconstruction, um, for PFA. So, uh, funding, um, we're here tonight with the, uh, for the public hearing through PFA. Uh, so we're at here, we've submitted on the sewer side in May, uh, the water application will go in. And then, um, in June, uh, they have what's called an intended use, uh, plan. And so the city, we just submit letters saying we'd like to be on that plan. PFA takes all the requests they, they get, run the, the lists. Um, they'll compile that and then, uh, submit generally in September, their list of projects that they feel are, are fundable. There's a thirty day comment period. And then they finalize that IUP list for the next year of what, um, uh, projects statewide, um, are eligible for funding. And then you have, uh, basically six months to get plans together and certified. And so I'll go through a little bit more, maybe I'm a little ahead of myself with schedule. But, so we're here, kinda first step with funding for clean water, drinking, and the drinking water revolving fund. Uh, that non-participating, city option to, to bond or however, you know, engineers shouldn't maybe get totally into the financial stuff with, you'll use your advisor in that. And then, um, special assessments, uh, for a portion, um, of the service reconstruction. And then, uh, Todd County with state aid, uh, funds for their portion of the Fourth Street project. And so we have a preliminary engineer's report here. When we get into assessments and a little bit further down the line, we'll come back with another preliminary engineer's report with more detail on us, on special assessments and such, probably have a little bit more refined. And then we'd split these two projects apart. So you'll have a one report for twenty twenty-four and another for twenty twenty-five. But we're lumping them all together at this point, just to get on these PPL and IUP lists. So, um, schedule, um, again, that's separate schedules then. Um, and so they would, uh, I guess finalize that, um, that IUP Intended Use, uh, Plan in the fall, usually about October first. And then you have six months to get your plans ready, um, basically by around March of next year. And to be able to bid in that area. And then construction, um, with a project of that size, I would think it would take all of, uh, construction season and probably wouldn't get the last, maybe you probably let it sit with the last lift of pavement and such to be finished up in twenty twenty-five. Um, the Fourth Street schedule, um, with the county identifying that for twenty twenty-five, um, we are in preliminary design right now. Could follow a similar path with the funding organization. Um, but we're kind of maybe a little bit further ahead on that. And so we'll be getting into more, uh, design and, and such. And the county, um, has kind of laid a schedule of they would, um, want to bid earlier in the year. So plans done by October twenty twenty-four for an earlier, um, bidding. And then construction in, uh, summer of twenty twenty-five on Fourth Street. That is what I guess I had.
So as far as the assessments that they may, that citizens might have, that would come when you guys come back with a more refined report and they would know.
Yes. And there's, yeah, and there's, uh, I, I guess, a process we've kind of liked to take is to have maybe just, and we haven't set this in stone, but is to have more of an information meeting first. And so people can come in, you know, without it being a formal public hearing, get information on the project, then come back. Having the improvement hearing would be their first time, you know, to start that off with, um, with the formal assessment, uh, period or process. And then, so that would usually, you know, in the fall, um, before you're really, really into design, but have a better idea of what those assessments would look like.
Anybody else have, have any, any questions for, for Brian? All right. I guess we close the public hearing then. Thanks, Brian. We'll move on to, uh, item number five. Consider approval of Resolution eighteen ninety-five, receiving and accepting the facility plan.
Copy of that resolution is in your packet. You know, basically indicating the council accepts the report and directs its submittal to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
Motion by Roy, second by Mary. Any discussion? If there is none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Move on to the next item. Consider approval of Resolution eighteen ninety-six, notice of order to remove hazardous building.
Uh, so in your packet is a copy of the resolution. Um, we did, uh, have Scott Soski go in and inspect the building, put together a report. The house which had burned, uh, here, uh, late last fall, uh, basically remains, uh, as it was right after the fire. Basically what, uh, you know, ordering the removal of this, uh, gives the property owners forty-five days to do it. Um, after that time, uh, if the, uh, building is still there, we would move forward with removing that structure. So we've got the resolution also included some photos, uh, to identify the property, so.
I'm one of the property owners.
Can she come up and speak to?
Sure.
You come up to the podium there and just state your, your name and your address, please.
My name is Leila Cameron, and I live at three fifteen First Street Northwest. Um, there are five property owners. Four of us really had not wanted to, anything to do with the property, but it was inherited to us. And we've tried to get rid of it, but the fifth one won't. And basically, from talking to my sister on Sunday, we really don't care if you guys keep it, take it, whatever with it. Um, but we just wanna know what backlash is gonna come upon us. I'm the only one that lives in the state besides the one that won't release his, um, ties to it. I had no idea it was being rented out. I knew the cops had stopped by my house and said that they thought there was potential for it being rented out. Otherwise I would've tried to stop it then and there. But yeah, I agree. I had no idea there was electricity hooked up to it. Um, we were kinda just, I guess, for it and were not sure where it goes from here.
Okay.
Cause as I said, none of us really want anything to do with it except for the one that was trying to rent it out.
Okay.
And now I'm sure he probably wants nothing to do with it cause he can't rent it out. And it just kind of got thrown at us as part of an inheritance.
Thanks for coming and explaining that. I don't know, um, what would be you?
Well, it, as far as what would happen going forward, there's a variety of options. If all five of you can agree and wanna sign it over to us, you know, then we'll tear it down. Well, we would need all five.
That's fair. We did, we'd have to have everybody on board again.
Right. Um, so, so if that isn't an option, uh, you know, basically we would move forward with legal process to remove the structure. Um, you know, at that point, as I understand it, there's an, an option or a possibility of basically, you know, play, getting a judgment, uh, to cover the cost. That would go against all five property owners. Uh, otherwise we tear it down, um, get assessed to your property taxes. Four years later, it goes tax forfeit, you know?
So it would get assessed to, uh, the property itself?
Right.
Or to our?
No, to the property itself.
Oh, cool. Cause when they told me that it was, I'm like, cause they told me that I have to have an inspector come and inspect it. And I'm like, okay, send me the paperwork. I said, and this is why I told them, I said, the house isn't livable anyways. And I knew it. Everybody knows it. And I'm like, you know?
Except your brother who rented it out.
Well, he probably knows that he just lost money.
Yeah.
And I told him, I said, I know it's back on his taxes. And it's gonna go back to the state every seven years.
Uh, actually three.
County. Well, then it should be about that. So it should be about that time then that it goes back to?
I, I would have to look at the current, um,
Cause I know he gave one year after my mom passed away that I don't think he paid any.
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure on that, but, and, and we can, you know, we can talk some more on that. You know, I think what we're doing here is saying, it's gotta go. You know, the five of you either do it or we will. And, uh, so, and, and if they're
I just wanna make sure that
If consensus can be reached by, you know, by the five, um, people that are on the deed and you wanna, um, arrange to just sign it over to us, we take it. And we'll deal with it, but.
Okay, so, cause I'm trying to make a graduation and still talks to the one. But I can probably get the brother in Washington. And would you be able to fill out paperwork or does he have to fill out paperwork? And how is?
We would, uh, I mean, I think what we would do is prepare the deed and just need signature. We would, uh, I mean, I think what we would do is prepare the deed and just need signatures, notarized signatures from the property owners.
And how does that work when three of them don't live in the state?
Mail. But that, you know, that, that's separate from this process. We're moving forward with this process. But in, in the meantime, we want to figure it out. We can, we can talk about that.
Okay.
So feel free to give me a call.
You're, okay.
We've talked.
I'll get those informations.
You can hang on one minute.
Excuse me?
There's no.
What?
There's no.
Sure.
Do the same, Mr. Ray.
Sure.
Uh, my question is said in the paperwork that the building needs to be secured immediately. Or to that extent, how long, because it's a lot of plywood that's going to be involved in secure work out going. Because it is a safety hazard clearly, if some little water, little signs, I'm already going to file it. It has to be. And it's been up there since December, I mean, last year or maybe sooner than that.
And tho- those are provisions of the inspection report. In the, in the actual resolution, um, that we're, the council is considering here tonight, it's ordering the removal of, of the hazardous buildings, including the house and all outbuildings within forty-five days.
Okay, so back to any more questions, does it need to be secured?
It, it should have been secured, yes.
It should have been.
Yeah.
Again, she's the only, I can help obviously, but, uh, you know, again, the cost of her, again, that's the degree required. Okay, thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Okay, so, it will all go back to the taxes and so, onto that property, so whoever ends up with it, to get it, right, they, I.
It's a process, you know.
Thanks. All right, so, um, we are, would still entertain a, uh, a motion to approve resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, resolution eighteen ninety-six.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Blake. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls same side. Motion passed. All right, we'll move on to the next item of business. Uh, consider the first reading of ordinance five forty-two regulating the sale of tetra hydrocannabinol products in the city of Staples.
Good.
That was impressive.
THC. THC.
THC.
I spelt it off.
THC.
So we talked a little bit about this at the, uh, at the council meeting a couple of weeks ago and, uh, provided a copy, uh, out to everybody, for review, but, uh, you know, basically this is based off of a model ordinance. And, uh, you, you know, after the legislature passed this, um, last year and it went into effect in July, there's three things that, you know, uh, emphemies have done, you know, one, they've either, uh, passed a moratorium, which basically gives you twelve months to study it and determine how or if you're going to regulate it. Two, um, you either, you know, you pass an ordinance saying, here's how we're going to regulate it. And, or the third thing is to do nothing. And in which case, you know, you know, the grocery store, the, you know, anybody basically can sell the, you know, the gummies at, at any location, so. What we have here basically is saying, okay, it's state law, you know, these things are legal. Here's how we're going to regulate it as the city of Staples. You, you know, if you follow through the process, it's very similar in layout to tobacco ordinance. But this, this has, uh, more language related to background checks, it has, um, it does have a distance from, uh, school properties. You have to be twenty-one in order to sell it. And, you know, and hopefully everybody took the time to read through it and, you know, follow it, you know, subject compliance checks and all the rest of the stuff, so.
So coming from my perspective, is there a possibility of not selling it in the city at all?
Not according to our city attorney.
Okay.
Cause it's legal.
All right. This is better than doing nothing.
The only thing that kind of came to mind when I was reading, if you scroll to page six, under, I guess it would be under licenses, wine item number, or letter K, no, I, L, for proximity to schools. I'm just curious, I'm reading an old copy from what you presented to the last council meeting. You know, it states here, um, no license will be granted for any person for retail establishment location that is within five hundred feet of a public or private school. Is there any way we could tweak that a little bit more to say within a church? I know we live in a community that's got several churches that govern a lot of youth at various times of the year, certain days of the week. I'm just curious if there's something we can do to tweak it a little bit more.
Yeah, I, you know, there's, you, when you look at different ones, they have different distances and they also have different distances from, you know, uh, some of them are, are schools, daycares, churches, trails, parks, you know, all of that kind of stuff. You know, after, after the discussion that, you know, that we've had at, uh, at E A, you know, school, C P.
Well, how far is the smoke shop? Is it one, would they, it seems like a place that would carry something like that. Are they five hundred feet from the school?
No. No.
So they wouldn't be able to carry it?
Well, I mean, our existing smoke shop is.
Okay, but there's a new smoke shop potentially going.
Well, we've got that on the agenda coming up here, but, um, the, the, you know, the, the question is when you start, you know, let, let's say, you know, I'd take another number out of a thousand feet from any one of those things that I just mentioned and you start laying that out, you're essentially banned, which, you know, which you can't do, you can't, you can't regulate it out of town. Um, but the, you know, if we, if, if churches want to be included or, um, you know, daycares or, you know, I don't, I don't know that, that daycare, it's likely to have the kids wander into the shop by gun wings, but. So I guess I would open that up to the, you know, the council for discussion.
So what, what says that we can't change it to private or public schools, churches, parks and daycares?
Well, you could.
That's my strong recommendation is what we do. And then the last thing that came to mind is if you go under ineligible ability and basis for denial of licenses. It states in there for under the grounds of denial. Number seven, the applicant is the spouse of a person ineligible for a license pursuant to the provision, blah, 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 blah. I believe it should be any immediate family member rather than spouse. As, you know, one might not be married. Or if it says just specifically spouse, who says that their brother can't just go open up shop too. So is there any way where we can do any immediate relative or family member?
I would have to check out that, that at all, for sure.
That's all I've got.
Melissa, have you heard anything with your other cities in the, if there's issue, Melissa Burkholz? Just, uh, out of curiosity, I'm sure you got an ear out there and hear.
We do, and it, you know, I reached more specifically like with the smoke shop, I reached out to a couple of the other cities that have them already and some, one of them, like the one in Wadena sells the stuff already and they haven't had problems, but that doesn't mean that the potential isn't there for problems. They, they regulate them and do their compliance checks and they've been cooperative with law enforcement, so. Obviously, it's not something we want to see here, but we can only work within the ordinance and the statutes, so.
Thanks.
But anybody who applied for this license would go through the same pro, you would go through the same process of ma- making sure that there are criminal charges or whatever you do in the investigation.
Right, and all, a lot of, um, there's a lot of limitations on what I can check on some of these background checks. But it would, in what I've seen, be pretty much the same as the tobacco license background, which would catch anything glaring that we should know about.
This would be a separate application, THC. So you, you would get a tobacco license and you would apply for a THC license specifically.
Right, yep.
Well, we have a, uh, recommendation from Blake to modify the, uh, ordinance.
So I, I wasn't writing quite fast enough. Yeah, churches, daycares, and what was the other parks?
Private and public schools, churches, parks and daycares. And the other one would be under the grounds of denial, the applicant is the spouse and or immediate family member. Person eligible.
Consensus of the, the council, what we would do is redraft and push the first reading of the ordinance to the next council meeting.
Do you have to run that by our attorney to make sure that's something that we can add?
With, specifically related to immediate family members and what that definition is, I don't know how broad you can make that.
So have a consensus then amongst us?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Looks like we have a consensus.
And we'll push that, push it.
You know that, don't you?
Excuse me?
Ernie's is going to be infected, affected by that, aren't you? Veterans Park.
Sorry.
Ernie's.
Ernie's. Veterans Park is, is that five hundred yards, five hundred feet away?
I don't think they would be grand.
Yeah, they, do they, do they do the edible thing now? Ernie's does, yeah, they would be, they would be grandfathered in.
They'd be grandfathered in, cause our ordinance isn't in place right now. So do we, uh, do we table that then? Table item number seven?
Refer it back to a lawyer?
Yeah.
Okay.
Table it.
All right.
Reschedule it.
All right, move on to item number eight. Consider approval of on-sale liquor license for Costa Azul Mexican Bar and Grill LLC at three oh four Second Avenue Northeast.
I'll make a motion for the approval.
The, before we go too far here, we do have a copy of the application. There's also a letter, uh, in there from Chief Burkholz on the background.
So I conducted a background based on the application that I received. And based on the application, um, there was multiple inconsistencies from one page to the next on spellings of names, dates, birth, things like that. I recommend to the council that they deny the liquor license based on other private confidential data. I also found one background in these two applicants.
Is it a language barrier?
No.
No? Oh.
Uh, one, one of the inconsistencies that I did follow up on was a date of birth issue with the female applicant where she transposed the dates of the month and the year. And we, when I checked her initially, um, I did run it both ways, knowing that that culture reverses those numbers. But there was other inconsistencies on the application. They, he listed different years for his dates of birth, uh, different, yeah. And then as a result of looking into that to try to find out the correct identity of that person, I found other things that I believe it would not be in the best public safety interest to approve.
I make a motion, we don't approve it.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that?
This will be the first time we've been able to warn someone on one of these issues.
All right, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? How about that? Move on to item number nine. Consider approval of tobacco license for Staples Tobacco Shop LLC at two sixteen Second Avenue Northeast.
Wait, did you read Melissa's?
So somewhat of a similar issue on that, I'll let, uh, Chief Burkholz fill you in, uh, on what she was finding.
Uh, with our ordinance on the tobacco licensing, I had a little more restrictions on what I could check, but I was able to find some records and a lot of that, again, unfortunately unable to share because it's confidential data. However, I can say that his application was incomplete and inconsistent. He spelt his name one way on the first page, a different way on the second page, including a signature that was spelt differently. And then, again, there's, uh, information that I learned about his eligibility to own it. That I can't elaborate on, but he would not be a eligible person to own the business.
I'll make the motion to deny this application for the license.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Doug. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 opposed? Mary's.
Before we move on to the, to the next item, and, and I know you're going to, um, you know, recognize the letter that we received from the Staples Motley Schools, kind of related to, uh, the smoke shop. But I just wanted to have a little bit of discussion about, you know, whether the council does have a desire when it comes to tobacco licenses to add, um, you know, a, a distance, um, from schools. And I don't know, Blake, if you'll have, have the same recommendation related to tobacco for churches, daycares, parks, all of those kinds of things and what a reasonable distance is.
I like the language as we've modified it in the THC language with the five hundred feet and the rest of it. That we're amending that one as we're allowed legally.
Affecting the gas station.
That's not going to be, they'd be, I believe, any existing place would have to go. Any existing place wouldn't be under the.
It'd be grandfathered.
It'd be grandfathered, so if any new establishment's going for it.
Yeah, it'd be new only.
But if they sell it another place.
I think it would still be grandfathered, that's part of their business, but if the use is discontinued, uh, for a period of twelve months, then.
Then it would be subject to what.
Take, take ordinance, ordinance is a prime example of that. Ordinance had a, a tobacco license and probably, um, I don't know, how long were they there? Three years? So, but that use was discontinued, so.
For a year.
Yeah, would be impacted by.
Could I make a comment on that too? Um, and this isn't to encourage kids to use alcohol or tobacco products, but it is to keep in mind the types of businesses that do sell tobacco are also gas stations. And so if you're referring to childcare, um, if you're referring to individual home childcare, that can be home-based in any location in the community, not necessarily just the childcare center or in a commercial area. So if, um, an example that comes up where you'd be prohibiting or making it very, very difficult for, say, the north side of town, if they had to be at least five hundred feet, there's limited spaces that would be applicable for, or good quality location for a, um, for a, um, new gas station to locate as the north side of our town grows bigger and that side is limited on access, then, um, we look at five hundred feet from the elementary school or the school district property, and they have lots of pieces of property throughout the community. You also have, um, childcare that could be at the neighbor's house down the road, but I bet they would probably like that gas station there, and that is one of the things that gas stations typically sell. So it's looking at the broader picture of it too, keeping in mind that if you're going to be as broad as all daycare, all childcare, all school property, all churches, you know, you're limiting access for a lot of, you know, quality business, you know, things that maybe aren't quite as in-your-face as a smoke shop, but definitely still something that would be desired in the community in those certain areas too. Um, so something to keep in mind as we're looking at these ordinances and not, not, um, keeping good business out of town too.
And the five hundred feet is from a, from a school-owned property, so it doesn't necessarily have to be a building on that property?
Well, it's also, well, not necessarily. I guess it depends on how you word your ordinance, and that's something to consider, is, um, you know, if it, if it's a school-owned property or if it's a school-occupied property, you know, and what is that?
Student occupied.
A student occupied, you know?
It'd be occupied is what we would have, an occupied school building or?
And then, um, clarify, you know, are you talking about childcare and in-home, there's, I would, I would have to double-check again, but I want to say there's probably twenty, you know, fifteen, something like that, um, when we were going through our childcare, they're all full with kids, but they are sporadically throughout the community, you know, so they're, and they pop up at random, and so it's hard to say, I mean, if you wanted to go on the south side of town and add another gas station, or, um, if south side decided to, you know, if theirs lapsed, you know, they would then have an issue because there's childcare near them as well. And so it's just something to keep in mind that you don't over-restrict it as a response to this incident, um, and thinking broader.
Other question, so if a daycare, if a daycare pops up next to a gas station, is it, is it the daycare's responsibility to have been built to, to start up next to it, or is it the gas station's responsibility? Because what if they're not next to anybody and they sell tobacco and then, um, a, a daycare pops up next to it, that isn't going to affect?
As much as I like to call myself an attorney, I would say we'd have to recommend conversing with the attorney, but I think in that case, if I were to think logically in my head, that it would be grandfathered in at that point, that that location already existed, and unless they lapsed for twelve months, then I don't think it would apply, but I'm not Joe, so I can't attest to that.
All right. You say more?
Well, we also have a little thoughts.
I think it'll be important for us to, after, uh, you've consulted with our attorney to bring, you know, send us that information prior to the next meeting.
Yeah. Um, did you include trails in here? That could really create a, even more of a. Okay. All right, I will, uh, get with our city attorney and put together some proposed language and get it out to everybody, hopefully with that few days here.
The safe routes to school, would that be considered? Does that school own it, or is that the city owned? If, if that were to go through?
Uh, only if it's on school property, but if we're talking about occupied, student-occupied buildings, um, you know, trail segments wouldn't necessarily fall in that.
I think a lot of that is actually sidewalks when we get to it on the school rather than trail even.
All right. Move on to the next item of business, which is Arbor Day proclamation.
Happy things.
Happy things. So, um, I'll read that. That's official. All right. Uh, whereas Arbor Day provides people in Staples the opportunity to celebrate the importance of trees and forests to our economy, culture, history, and the future of the state, and whereas trees are of great value as they provide clean air and water, shade, energy savings, wildlife habitat, recreational opportunities, wood products, and jobs while capturing and storing carbon from the atmosphere, thereby offsetting greenhouse gas emissions, and whereas properly planting and caring for a diverse mix of trees makes community forests more resilient by minimizing the impacts of diseases, insects, and other stressors such as climate change and providing long-term community and environmental benefits, and whereas thoughtfully choosing, planting, and caring for a diverse mix of trees now supports resilient communities into the future. Now therefore, I, Ron Murray, Mayor of Staples, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day in the City of Staples. Move on to, uh, committee reports. We'll start with the Staples Economic Development Authority.
Okay, um, we met on February 28th. Um, it was actually a fairly quick meeting, um, with a lot of discussion around the tobacco ordinance, which I won't dive too great into, as we pretty much had a lot of that discussion here and within the letter that was submitted. Um, but first, we talked about the downtown revitalization, um, which is, the groups are still meeting, I will be attending, um, a meeting tomorrow night, um, and then I plan to, we'll be having a team lead meeting, um, this month as well to kind of reconnect and give guidance and support, and, um, the application for Blandon Funds, or that Quick app, I guess, to the city to ensure that those funds are being, um, used properly based on Blandon's requirements will be, um, put out this week to the groups once I finalize, finalize it. Um, there's a few details that I had to clarify with Blandon, so on what, so I didn't, uh, give misinformation to the groups and confuse everybody like I was, so. Um, that's moving forward, it's, it's going to, you should be seeing a lot of projects happen this summer and a lot of improvements. Um, the act of transportation application, um, we have not heard back yet. Um, it, I just looked today and it looks like March 23rd is when we, they should be making their final decisions and sharing the information out, so sometime in that week, I would say, we would know if we were approved for it or not. Um, the small cities application, we did make it to round two. Um, I didn't realize there was a round two. The initial, um, letter of intent or the initial application seemed like it should have been big enough, but it turns out you also have to do more, um, but we did make it to the next round of, um, applicants, and they did send out a list of, you know, those that were denied, and then, um, where they didn't meet their minimum basic requirements, and then the, a list of potentially qualified, that they're willing to read more, but they're not necessarily on the top of the list, and we were on that list of highly qualified, um, applicants. So we are, it is looking good. Um, of course, they only have so many dollars to disperse, so hopefully we are able to acquire some of those dollars. Um, I'm still believe that we're supposed to find out, um, this fall, whether or not we get full funding or full approval of that. Um, I will be connecting with Central Minnesota Housing Partnership this week with our consultant on that and have more information later. Um, the ARPA funds, we have identified a secondary potential project, um, in addition to the Valley View, um, engineering and, um, zone, or zoning, excuse me, we've been talking a lot about this zoning stuff, um, the engineering and plating of that Outlet A, uh, that we required over the summer, winter here, um, and we were applying to those city, or the county of Wadena for funding for that. They would like to see actual physical pipes in the ground, um, potentially. There's kind of a split on the commissioners' level, so we, we did come up with another project out in the industrial park that could fit that, they do like it, some of them still prefer the Valley View project, so we're trying to work with them to identify which route we should go, um, but we have until July to get that finalized with them, and we're working closely with them. Um, we had a lot of discussion, every meeting, we have a standing agenda item on housing, um, we talked about the, um, the Ives property where they are bringing in the, the additional modular homes and kind of creating a community over there. Um, I'm sure Gerald mentioned more about that in his report out, but, um, it's progressing, and then we had an update from Lisa Birga on the plaza construction and how that is coming along, everything is on schedule. Um, it's good to see it coming out of the ground, so that's exciting. Um, and then I gave an update, I did get an update from the Farmers Union, um, the modules have been ordered, they anticipate delivery this fall still, um, assuming everything goes as planned, and then ground and foundation work, we should start seeing some activity out there this summer, um, spring, summertime, around the same time that they're work through in their, um, foundation work at the Central Lakes College, they want to get it done over here while they wait for those modulators, so. Um, that is, then we talked about the smoke shop and some ordinance stuff around, um, tobacco licenses, and then we adjourned at 5:48.
Questions for Melissa? Thanks. Move on to Public Works Commission.
I'll take that. One, two, one, two. Good, okay. Uh, Public Works, Commissioner met March 7th, uh, up here at City Hall, relatively short agenda, a couple of things, one, I would like some action on, uh, the, um, Staples Motley Schools is requesting that they be allowed to close Pleasant Avenue, which is immediately north of the high school, between Second and Third Street, uh, this summer for basically construction staging, so there's that one block segment and, uh, have job trailers that will be able to get materials in and out of the school without, uh, traffic, uh, coming into play there. So, uh, the commission, uh, did make a recommendation to the council that we allow that road to be closed for the summer during construction.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
John, second by Mary. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Um, the, uh, other primary item was the preliminary engineering report, um, talked about that and heard about that here tonight, uh, from Brian, and, uh, meeting adjourned at 8:46.
Move on to open forum. Anybody out there that wants to speak for open forum?
Sure, I would. First off, I just want to thank you for the service that all of you, uh, you give to the Staples community. Um, obviously, I'm here tonight as a school superintendent and sharing my concerns with the, um, the smoke shop and the proximity to our, to our 512 building. Um, so first off, I want to thank you for denying that, um, and providing the opportunity to look at an ordinance to, uh, keep our, keep our youth, um, away from the convenience of, uh, tobacco and hemp products, so, um, I, I do want you to consider, um, you know, a, a distance of at least five hundred feet, if not more, because it's certainly, um, something, uh, availability and proximity certainly plays a role in access, and so as we, as you look at that moving forward, I, I do think convenience provides a role for, uh, kids to have access to those types of things, and every single day, we work extremely hard to keep tobacco, vapes, all of those types of things out of our school, and I can't, I can't commend our staff. Um, it, I mean, they do a great job with that and, and certainly would, this would inhibit even their jobs to be even harder, so, um, again, I thank you tonight for denying, um, the smoke shop availability right, uh, right next to our middle high school, so, um, just the information in that, uh, that letter, I, I, I do want to, uh, point out that, um, as a school district, we have had some great partnerships with the city. Uh, we have, you know, as far as railroad days, the home, uh, homecoming block party, summer baseball, uh, summer rec, some of those, uh, positive things that we've been able to work together on, and I think that's important to recognize as well, so, um, as we navigate through, uh, changes in our city and our school and, and some great things to come, I appreciate the partnership and, and hope that we can continue to work together for the betterment of our youth and for the betterment of our kids moving forward as we, as we, uh, get to shape our, our next generation, so with that, I, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to city administrator's report.
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, I'll share, uh, Ron and I went out to CLC, uh, was that last week or week before? Last week, um, met with, uh, President, uh, Hera Charlier, I may not pronounce her last name right still after all these years, but, um, I think, uh, good, uh, had really good conversation about, uh, what's happening out at the college and programs and, um, took a little bit of a tour, got, uh, Ron into parts of the college you probably haven't been in before, uh, yeah, so, uh, that's something that, uh, that we try to do with her, uh, every year, so. Um, also the campus dean, uh, position, I know that they're accepting applications and, um, probably pretty quickly here will be doing interviews as Dave Endicott announced his retirement, so, um, that's a big position for our community. Um, you know, a couple of these, we'll get with the, uh, park and rec report, um, at the next meeting, uh, May 19th, you know, we've locked in for citywide cleanup, that's a Friday evening, three o'clock to seven o'clock, and, uh, we'll be getting information out in, uh, in the rumor mill and up on the website and Facebook, um, page for that, and, uh, just, uh, wanted to let the council know, a couple, uh, maybe a month ago or so, you approved submitting the pay equity report, we did get everything back from the state day that we are in compliance with the amount of pay equity, so, that is all I have, answer those questions.
I'm with that, we adjourn.
Second.
Mary to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.